Welcome. Call the meeting to order. This is an advertised meeting of the Borough Council, though no formal action is going to be taken. I do want to confirm the fact that we have a quorum in the room. And just introducing from left to right across the room are council members, Carmelo Vitale, Bob Landergan, Rob Cadenello, Dr. Vincent Esposito, and Don Links. And unable to attend tonight is our council president, Jeannie Sukamoto. And this is our second town hall meeting with the theme of capital projects and the process. And I'll tell you what's going on. But one of the rules we have is, so you don't start reading ahead, we do have handouts, but we're going to hold them back. Midori, our volunteer from Drew University, one of our civic scholars, will be ready to hand them out at the end, so you can take that home. And we'll also have this posted on the web. So tonight's agenda, we'll be covering examples of recent projects, just to give you an idea of what's going on this year and past years. We'll talk about the planning process. How do capital projects get put on the list, and how do they actually come to fruition? Then the approval process, from the idea to the planning, to the actual approving and funding of a project. How we set priorities, which is always a very hot topic, whether it's on capital projects or around the dinner table at home, how do you set those priorities? And we'll talk a little about funding, how we pay for all the projects. For those that attended the last town hall meeting, this is a little repeat, but it's never hurts to go over the ground rules. Number one, it's our goal to be about an hour with this town meeting, but no more than an hour and a half. You start losing after that 90-minute mark, so we'll try to keep that going. So if we get a spirited discussion, don't be insulted by trying to move things along with the questions. It's just trying to get everything in there and respect everyone's questions. And one of our key things is, there are no right or wrong answers, so don't hold back. Everyone gets an A+. You can pick whatever role you want in the audience when it comes to discussion time. If you want to ask questions, provide input, that is fine. If you just want to be a listener, that is fine. No one will pass judgment on you. And you will notice the council members, except for myself and Rob, who will be presenting a little bit, will be fairly quiet. It's our role to be a sponge tonight, to absorb all the input. So question one, what are capital projects? There are improvements including purchase, construction, or improvements of land, equipment, buildings, roads, infrastructure, major investments. These are things that can be depreciated over time if you're in the business world. There are projects that are very visible, and some that are not. The things we see every day, the roads we drive on, sports facilities, buildings, the buildings we may appear, may be improved, and then forgotten about after improvements happen. And here's a couple of projects recently that are really examples of things you see. The one you see right now is a great example, because if you are not in these neighborhoods, the Pine, Beach, and Rose, Cedar neighborhoods, you may have driven on their roads a year ago and said, you know, "These roads are in bad shape. They're somewhat drivable." But you only realize if you live in the neighborhood the extra impact of things that are not seen, such as storm water management. So a lot of times when road projects happen, a lot of it is devoted to storm water management. So while now, as you drive through the neighborhood, you have smooth roads, nice curves, it looks nice. For those that live in the neighborhood, they now have dry basements, water that goes where it's supposed to, so it makes a big difference in their lives. Woodland Road. We did Woodland Road in three sections, starting from Maratha, working our way down, and most recently was the east section, from Garfield down to Barnesdale. Now, this will be on the test, so I want you to read every word on this slide, so you know exactly what's... Now, this is one of Bob Vogel's slides, and if you don't know Bob Vogel, our borough engineer, right in the front row. Wave your hand a second there, Bob.
Thank you.
But this gives you an idea of the scope of what goes into a project. And the Fields at the MRC is one of the most involved projects we have, because a lot of that, 95% of that was done in-house. The project planning, design parameters, guidelines given, what will be in this project, what is the budget, contract documents, very important, because they have to be done properly, so when the bids come in, they are consistent, and there are no surprises in the bids. And then, just as important as anything else, the shuttle goes in the ground, you don't sit back, and then cut the ribbon when it's all done. You have to manage it on a daily basis, watching the contractors, making sure everything is done to spec. And if anyone has done home construction, it's all done exactly as planned, right? There's no surprises when they open up the wall. You know, every pipe looks exactly where it belonged to be. If you've done a kitchen, everything fit in perfectly? I don't think so. So that's reality is, every project has its surprises, and we need to be able to react to that.
Hey, we just want to hand that slide. It's so polished, because we're putting it for a state award for recreational development.
Oh, thank you for pointing that out. A well-deserved reward.
I wasn't well-prepared before you asked my name.
And buildings. These are improvements that not everyone sees right away. Or if they drive by, in fact, I had someone here on Friday, Madison resident for 10 years, had never been in this building, sadly. So never knew that if you were handicapped, you couldn't get up to the second floor. Never knew what the improvements were needed in this building. Never knew the fact that we were able to put a courtroom that meets state guidelines, and where a firehouse that was long outdated went. And the outside looks the same, but a whole lot went into this building. And obviously, our new public safety building, serving Madison for many years to come, that it was a public safety building, not built for the year 2000, but the year 2050. And then, major equipment. And these, again, things that can be depreciated. Fire trucks go well into six figures, and those are major equipment. We can't fit those into the operating budget. Dump trucks, the equipment for DPW fall in this area. Police cars have much shorter lifespan, because of the heavy-duty life they have on the road all the time, so they come out of operating. And then there's projects you don't see, but we know, you'll know about it if they fail. This sewer system that would back up, you don't want to know about. And so these are things that have to happen. You'll see the disruption when the construction happens, but you don't know what's going on underneath the ground. And it gets covered over, and it's forgotten about. And that's a good thing, because that means everything is flowing. Storm sewers. And this is, again, the same picture of the North Street. But on the left are pictures of storm sewers that run under the railroad tracks. So getting water from point A to point B with the railroad tracks underneath, major undertaking, and with cooperation in NJ Transit. Water main replacement. Again, something... When was the last... You read the paper often in New York City and other cities about water main breaks and the amount of water loss, the flooding that happens. If we're preemptive and keep it on top of it, that will not happen in Madison. And another category that most towns don't even need to worry about, they hand it off to JCPenney, PSENG, but we maintain a full electric company, substations, distribution And just a few more examples of projects from 2012, obviously Madison Recreation Center, which is 2010, 11, 12 project. Bailey Yeller is on the list for improvements. The water mains on Academy and Division, Ridgedale. Miscellaneous tank and well projects. Brionically, we've got a paint clearing water tanks, and that is a capital project. The wells that pump the water make sure our houses are served. Pump stations. And you've heard a lot about that this year, about the fact we needed to make this sanitary sewer system, an infrastructure that people forget about until it's too late, a priority. So we made sure it was not too late. So North Street, which is a major one, and then Candlewood West End are all being done. Those are smaller projects in North Street, including Treadwell. Flowedar, end-of-pipe monitoring. If anyone knows what that is, gets a bonus point. That is actually, we're keeping track of the flow out of the sanitary system as it leaves Madison and heads to the sewer treatment plant. That'll help us for future planning. It helps us know what our load is on the sewer treatment plant. But another key part of it is, we want to treat the stuff that comes out of the house. We don't want to treat the stuff that comes from the sky. And as we do this monitoring, and if there's big spikes during storms, we now realize that storm water is getting into the sanitary system, and we are taxing the system that is not designed to handle that. So if we then put more money into the front end, keeping the storm water out, in the long run, we can save money at the other And then, we have just traffic, smaller things. The flashing lights, you've noticed that we did the one in Noe and Woodland. Greenwood and Britton Street, which is one of our hot accident areas, has been greatly improved by having an LED light, double light, much brighter. And then, we're also working on the ones further down on Greenwood at Fairview, and then Fairview and Central. And we covered all the road projects. And you see, we don't do this alone. When it comes to a neighborhood street, Pine, Beach, Rose and Cedar, that is on us. That is on all our taxpayers. When we get to Woodland, by the definition of that road, by the amount of traffic, it is about a collector road. Is that the classification for Woodland?
Woodland is a collector, sure.
Yep.
And the county roads are generally arterial.
Yep. So by being that level, we can apply for state aid. So we did, every section of Woodland was state aid. Rosedale, same category. We have state aid for that. Green Avenue, as you know, we're applying for state aid, so we can do that next spring. So these major roads, we can get support with. But when we do the side roads, that is, again, on our local taxpayers. And then, what's great about being an elected official in Madison is, every road, we get yelled at. You know, I think every council person here probably heard, "When are you going to take care of Park Avenue? Green Village is a mess. What are you going to do about it?" Well, we have another partner, and that is the county. And so those roads are maintained by the county. We work closely with them, but they fund it 100%. And you will notice the cooperation that working with the county returns. Two examples as far as traffic calming. Lewanica, or actually, all three of those are traffic calming examples. Lewanica, along Drawl de Farms, and this might be something only I noticed, but for the longest time, there was passing if you were heading towards Madison Avenue. It was a dotted line on one side. It was actually no passing if you were heading towards Woodland. And it's always scared me to death, if you took a right off of Glenwild, someone all of a sudden could be passing in that stretch there. Very dangerous. You don't need to pass in that short stretch. We worked with the county. It is now double yellow, no passing all along. Anyone that knows the intersection of Shunpike and Lewanica, that little triangle, everyone, no one knew exactly what to do. You know, triangles always challenge people, isosceles or whatever. No, seriously. But it was always a challenge, yield, stop. That is now a true T-intersection, far more safer for residents and drivers. And then Park Avenue, we've heard the concerns. We had a recent accident there about the speed. If you notice the striping that the county did for us, gives that visual squeezing, a traffic calming effect. So again, they funded it. We worked together to make it perfect. And Main Street, Madison Avenue, that is all state roads. So the project going on right now with the gas line is PSENG doing it, and then you'll see the state coming back to pave the eastern section. Now, to give my voice a little rest, I'm going to ask Rod to come up and talk about the planning process, the dollars behind it. Rod has two roles here. One is our liaison to finance, so that's why he's serving the finance part of this. And his other role is, he had suggested and provides a leadership to our capital project review committee. And we'll talk about that.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so my father always told me that you had to be smarter than the tool you're trying to operate. So forgive me if I lose the battle with the slide projector. It's been a long day. Okay, so I want to thank the mayor for the kind introduction. I'd also like to point out, however, that Councilman Sam Cerseiello and I were the ones who initially put in the agenda recs to bring back the construction review committee. So inasmuch as, you know, I'm in charge of it now, there was a group effort to resurrect that, because I believe there was a more rigorous planning process some years ago before I was involved. So basically, as it pertains to the process, Bob Vogel and his team manage the planning. Historically, we have asked the departments to update their five-year capital plans every year. Usually, we like to try to get it done in the first or second quarter. Council will review and have input, and then we put together an annual capital budget. One thing that we did when we brought back the construction review committee was, as opposed to each individual department, you know, kind of jockeying for funds, you know, because there's something that was important to each group, we tried to address the town's capital needs on a risk-weighted basis. So we actually had each of the department heads to rank order all of the submissions, so that at the end of the day, we had agreement among the different departments as to which was more important. So for example, when I talk about the North Street, you know, even the electrical department said, "Yeah, you know, we can fix this more than anything else." And there was a day where we all got together, you know, we did a tour, everyone's top priorities, and after that, we really tried to address it on a unified basis, as opposed to individual submissions. All right. That's smarter than the mission we're trying to operate. So as you can see, the amount of capital that we are going to need over the next five years is in excess of $18 million. It is a challenging process, and we do everything that we can in the budgeting process to try to set aside money. So inasmuch as we are doing our best not to bond more for this, it's a very selective process. Yes, Pat?
I mean, you're already through 2011, and mostly like through 2012. Is that $10 million we're still ready to spend, or is that still projects you'd like to do in the next several years?
2011, I believe, had the MRC included in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's $3 million off the top.
I understand that. But in terms of the other two and a half, have you been on those projects?
We've done at least 50% of them. I mean, we can go through the list. One of the things that the project review committee has done successfully in the past two years, as opposed to prior years, is we've gotten all the utilities together, we've gotten all the department heads together, and we have one... We have one spreadsheet that covers the entire borough. So the electric department's in there, the DPW's in there, the sewer department is in there, the water department is in there, the buildings are in there, the parking lots are in there, the roads are in there. It's all in one healthy-sized spreadsheet. And they all have demands, and they all have needs, and they all have requests. And that's what the initial run of $18 million requests came up with. So after that, the five-year plan is parsed into a series of single-year capital budget plans. And the capital budget plan is not always fully inclusive of the five-year requests, because of priority making. And Pat, we haven't appropriated all the money. This is really the wish list that comes to us, and this is what we really need to spend. Correct. So we have not approved $10.4 million, including the MRC, over the past two years. We have a compass what's on the capital budget, okay? But not all the requests.
No, I just wanted to kind of zoom this to the third way through that. How much of what should have been done was done, and how much is still going to spill over the next several years?
I'll field that with a 50%, but I'll verify in detail.
Less than three and a half to the...
Right. Or including the... No, including the MRC. The MRC was 3.3, 2011. Which is done. Right. And so if you include that, and then we appropriated roughly $2 million this year, if I'm not mistaken, and maybe $1 million additional for last year. So I believe we're right at about 50% or 60% for the two years. Any further questions on this slide? Okay. So we appropriate funds through an audience, and that requires two votes, introduction and adoption. The department that requests the funds, you know, will develop specifications for the purchase, and then this capital review process will actually come in, and we look at the bid specs. We look at what's going out. Each department head is charged with reviewing the specifications to see if there's any work that they can do in-house to try to save money, as opposed to going outside with it. We double-check to make sure that before we do this, do the work, we're not going to have to do something else. So for example, with Sampson Avenue this year, we discovered that one of the main water lines that fills the water tank up on Midwood ran right under Sampson. So before we spent the money and repaired Sampson, we wanted to make sure that that water line wouldn't be compromised. And if it needs to be replaced, we'd do it now, so that we don't do a road and then dig it up again. In the past, hopefully, we would have caught that, but, you know, who knows? So again, that's sort of what we do. We also, you know, check with our partners at PSENG, and to make sure that they're not planning any major construction, because I guess in the past, we've had some instances where we've done some work on roads, and then the gas company comes in, digs them up, puts a new pipeline. And we're trying to get in front of it, so that we don't have to spend on it twice. Now, we might hire consultants for major or specialized projects. We try to keep that to a minimum. You know, a few years ago, we spent an order amount of money on consultants. We do everything we can to minimize that. And again, for example, at the MRC, Bob's group did the lion's share of that work. I'm not sure how much we spent on consultants of anything, but it really was a good example of keeping everything in-house.
For planning process, interestingly, for that project, we spent a lot of money on consultants for that, but...
On planning.
I'm sorry. It's such a small audience. You know, with that planning process, we spent a fair amount of money on consultants, Rob. But, you know, as things tightened up and developed, and project budgets were talked about, I think ultimately, we were kind of dissatisfied with the high numbers they were coming in with. And then we really decided to put an extra effort on trying to do it ourselves. And I think we saved a lot of time and money, and I think, you know, ultimately, it was nice to have the entire borough and its various departments come together on our project, and ultimately also saved us a fair amount of money, long range, on installing a great deal of infrastructure that hadn't been planned out.
Absolutely. So then, we hold various community meetings. I recognize a lot of the faces here for people who have attended community meetings, whether it was about the fields or some of the roadwork we've done. We get input. And then, we take the plan and specifications, and we are bound by state laws as to how we bid them out. You know, again, I think everyone agrees with the example that Mr. Cerseiello has of, you know, why would we tell people how much money we have for a project? We'd like to have them come in and give us their best price. Unfortunately, the law says that we have to appropriate money for a project before we can bid it out. We have no choice in this. It's the way it works. You know, you might be able to fine-tune it, but at the same time, you know, we are bound by these rules.
Yes, Sam.
That's the case. We want to appropriate below.
It's appropriate below.
Sam, hold that thought, okay?
Just go along with the slide.
It's... We want to try to hold off on just clarification questions, but the quick answer is, if you appropriate below it, you've got to go back and reappropriate, because you can't let it go at a price higher than what was allocated for it.
So if we don't get any bids in that, plus, you know, from the next slide, what drives priorities, I think, you know, safety is the first. And we want to make sure that when bidding projects, we do it the right way the first time. That's basically what Texas interests. Do it right the first time. Other key facts go onto our asset preservation, potential disruption, the long-range impact, any funding we can get, and resources. Now, and I will say, I think that the most strides that we've made with bringing back this committee is that, as opposed to individual groups submitting their requests for capital approvals in the back, it's now done jointly, so that we try to get everyone thinking about what's best for the borough in the long run, as opposed to what's best for an individual department, you know, or, you know, or whatever sort of pet project someone might have. This, it's a pretty robust project process. Like Bob said, we have a single spreadsheet where we track all of our projects, and we rank order them in terms of criticality to the borough. Where do we get the money from? Well, every year, we try to put money into the capital budget. We also can rely on fund balance. And what fund balance is, if I'm not mistaken, and Ray, please jump in, because sometimes I get confused. And then, if we have borrowed money, and for the purpose of a capital project, and that capital project comes in under what we borrowed, the remaining balance is called fund balance, and that is available. Now, we've already borrowed this money, we're already paying interest on it, and that excess money becomes available for use for other capital projects. So it's important that we try to limit the amount of fund balance that we use for anything else other than capital, because we don't want to get in a situation where we are using one credit card to pay out another in terms of ongoing expenses. We look at the sale of assets. Last year, we sold the property in the Orchard section, and this year, we're looking to sell 10 million. Any money that we receive for the sale of those properties will go directly into the capital balance. State grants, obviously. And we've been doing a wonderful job of getting some money from the state and bonding. When worse comes to worse, we can bond it. There is another option. We can pass a tax, we can increase tax, and have it go directly to capital, and not have it count as part of the base levy. So for example, you know, if we need an extra $2 million, for example, to redo the joint sewers, you know, we could theoretically raise taxes and just fund it that way, as opposed to borrowing. And then not... Bob, what do you want to say?
No, I was just going to add, Rob.
I mean, I'm not saying we're going to do it, but that's also an option, right? Right? So we could raise taxes over a couple of years and just kind of take the pain upfront, as opposed to bonding.
Point of Madison history, and some towns still... There you go. Some towns in the state still do this. They used to have individual assessments, individual property owners affected by individual projects years ago, too. And I think we, in this borough, stopped it for, as far as road projects were concerned, and drainage and everything associated with the roads. We had stopped that about 15 years ago, when we did the overall road improvement program, which was passed by the governing body in 1996. And so since 1996, we haven't had any of those individual assessments. But that was also an option for funding, and remains an option for many municipalities. I think less preferable overall, it's nicer to have a bigger picture.
Not that it's preferable, I'm just saying it's an option we can use.
Absolutely.
Are you saying that you could have a special levy that would be over and above the 2%?
As I understand from talking to the CFO, and Ray, correct me if I'm wrong, you can pass a tax that goes directly for capital use and not have it become part of the baseline tax. Is that correct, Ray?
The state has a rule that you cannot increase the tax levy from one year to the next.
If the state has a rule that you cannot increase the tax levy from one year to the next, how would you...
Greater than 2%, but there are exceptions. One of the exceptions are expenditures for capital improvements. So if the governing body, there was a consensus to raise taxes greater than the 2% threshold, you could exceed the 2% cap for the purposes of increasing the investment in capital projects.
And then that, that specific amount would not become part of the...
It would not become part of your base.
Right, not become part of the base for next year. So it's kind of like a levy almost, that's sort of the levy that Bob was offering.
This is a good problem, that would be based on the properties, would we affect the, and add on the property?
Yes. Yeah, we pay more in property, yeah, absolutely.
Just as, since we're getting these questions in here, it may be, no, it's all right because it may be appropriate as we hit these slides to get some of these quick ones with, so an apology to Sam. We will, if it is to a particular clarification, a particular side, we can let the questions go by. And just so you understand why we're handing out this microphone even though we have a fairly intimate audience and you think you can speak loud enough, as you see, we have the camera and this way we can pick it up so when we put this on the web and on the table, they'll be able to actually hear us for once.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if you covered this in the operating transfer, but that also includes the rest of our money for utility surplus accounts, is that correct?
Yes.
And traditionally, as Lloyd Madison actually funded a lot of his capital projects.
It was before my time, but based on the numbers I've seen, it appears that that is in fact the case, yes.
And I've started to look at the electricity rates that you're going to be charged for the wholesale price purchases going forward.
Yes.
And I think there's actually a major opportunity starting in 2014 to actually start to do that again.
Now, you're getting beyond clarification. Hold that thought, Terrell.
You're on funding sources, so...
Yeah, but hold that thought.
Unfortunately for us today, though, natural gas, I think, was up to 360 in the spot market and the 2013 strip is above, well above $4, so it looks like we, you know... But I will say that we have done a fantastic job. Again, that's something else that the council last year looked at and Doc Esposito, you know, took a leadership role in that along for our administrator, co-adjunct assistant borough administrator Burnett, in actually parsing in purchases as opposed to the long-term fixed rate comp. So yes, that's something for that future, future council will enjoy in short, but we'll talk about it later. So, in the budgets, 2009, we transferred $500,000 to capital, 2010, $500,000 to capital, nothing in '11, and this year, $750,000, but some of that money came from asset sale of the Orchard Street properties.
The Orchard, is it Orchard Street?
Yeah, and from fund balance. But as you can see, with the large amount of capital requests that we have, you know, this is, this is, this is the problem we're going to face going, you know, in the future is that we're going to generate a lot more money into capital. We have some, a strip here of data about our year-end balances of surplus accounts. General capital, electric capital, water capital, as you can see, there's been a steady drawdown. And in this year's budget, we worked hard to try to, you know, to eliminate or at least greatly reduce the amount of surplus that we would draw down for the future years. A couple of reasons, you know, as one, it's kind of a perilous drop and number two, we were worried about our bond rating. So 2012, the 2013 budget, you know, should be a little bit better shape. In terms of grants, as you can see, we've done a wonderful job in getting grants from both the county and the state. You know, in terms of the MRC, 7.3 million towards the purchase of the property. In 2008, and I think come back down to the bottom line, another 1.6 odd million dollars that I know borough administrator Cody has been working very closely with our elected representatives to try to free up from the Green Acres group, we think we'll get it. And then just, you know, more, and this is, this is sort of, sort of work we need to continue to do and try as best we can to expand. Budgets are tight everywhere. In terms of asset sales, we sold the Health building, was that 2008 or 2009?
Well, I'm trying to, it was 2008.
2008.
I think it's 2009.
And 22 Orchard Street, the three properties, you know, we turned three properties, we turned $2,000 this year. And we have an estimate of $300,000 for 10 Maple, which I believe is going to be sold on the 18th. There you go. So bring your checkbook. And with that, I'll finish and hand it back to the board.
Thank you, Rob. So any, before we go to our discussion questions, any more clarification questions? A question you might have had on slide or, Sandy? Andy, wait for that microphone, sorry.
The transfer from the fund balance, can you explain what borrowing that came against?
It could be various projects, you know, for example, Hartley Dodge and the Public Safety Building, if we didn't, we did not spend everything that was allocated for, we borrowed for Hartley Dodge, so that can be used elsewhere.
Okay, but it's always from a borrowing, it's not from money that we've had in capital budgets for a project that we were paying for as we went along.
Yeah, what are the, another approach or another source is when you take a, you know, the example we keep on talking about is what, as Sam said, what if you allocate less to tell people you're willing to spend less of it? So let's say we allocate $1 million for a project. Now, even though we have told the bidders out there, we've allocated $1 million, they still want the job, they're not going to be the only ones bidding on it. So the bids could come in at $750,000. So we encumbered a million, the project came in at 750, and that money can be realized, we retire the ordinance, that money goes back into the capital fund. So it's not fund balance, but it becomes available for another project down the line.
Okay, so fund balance is only against...
Against the bonds and then there's other sources of money on the balance sheet.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Ray, is he...
The overwhelming bulk of the money in the fund balance came from the cancellation of a project, which was $1.5 million from the Elmer Street Culvert project, which we had an alternate way to do that project. I mean, we've added very little, I mean, as the mayor indicated. The other process is after we appropriate the dollars, if the project comes in less, the funds are canceled and then the funds go back to the pot that they came out of originally.
Sam?
Going back to how we, how we do it, to me, that doesn't, I would give another suggestion how you could do it. Say, for example, you allocate $1 million for a job and the job comes in at 750. Maybe the job's worth 700, but in the meantime, two or three contractors meet together, they know you want to spend a million. What I'm suggesting is if it's worth 750, say 7, because the economy is bad, you've got a lot of contractors out there that'll come in and they're all hurting from money, just like everybody else. Money is tight. So what I'm suggesting is keep, keep, keep it down low and if the bids come in and it's too low, they reject the bids or whatever, at least the contractors know, hey, they know what the price is, you come back with another bid. What I'm saying is the contractors out there are hungry, okay? And what I'm suggesting is instead of going that way, go the other way. I think we would save a lot of money because, like I said, if they know you want to spend a million dollars, two or three contractors bid on a job and they happen to be know each other, hey, Madison's spending a million dollars on a job, we could do it for, you go in with a $700,000 bid on, you know, in any case, you avoid all that, go in low and the contractors, believe what I tell you, they're all hurt. That's my suggestion. I would rather, as me, go the other way than go the way these guys are going. Because that's where councilwoman found that meme because we're, to me, it don't make sense. I would go the other way, that's what I would suggest.
But Bob, could you just cover a little bit about how estimates are put together? Because I think there, there's not a whole, there's some structure we have to follow as far as coming up with a final number for a...
Definitely, it's very structured.
Yep.
And that works against us sometimes. And I think the fact that before you do an appropriation, you should have an engineer's estimate pulled together and that engineer's estimate is essentially public information. You have a lot of bidders calling in for the engineer's estimate before they bid. Now, again, Sam, I know it doesn't make sense to a lot of contractors who want to come in at a lower price, but the contractors that come and bid here projects in town, I mean, one of the hazards of having a project that's appropriated money too low is when the contractor sees that, if I'm a good contractor and I would want to come to Madison and get a good product for a good price and I see low numbers, I won't bid on it. I'll pass it over. And so you wind up with worse contractors. If you take a look at the situation that we had at Green Avenue last year, in fact, it worked against us. We appropriated low and it just worked against us. So we're back to the drawing board on Green Avenue.
Do you want to respond to that?
No, it's a clarification question, but there'll be time for...
Yeah, there was a comment made about when, on the slide, the engineering consultant fees and I'm assuming that's through bidding as well? If not, I'd like to know how that happens, how someone's hired. Secondly, I heard it, there might be, if there was an excessive amount, when is that determination made? What is kind of the litmus test to say there needs to be a consultant hired? How do you make that determination?
And our staff can help support or add some more, a couple of things. One on the bidding process for professional services is different than construction services. Construction goes out to the lowest qualified bidder. So you have five bids, every, all five contractors meet the qualifications, the lowest bid gets it, even if you just have a bad gut feeling. Professional services, attorneys, engineers, auditors, it is, there is not a requirement to go to lowest bidder. It's one that's maybe best qualified, we do an interview process. This past year, we basically put out RFPs for all our professional services. So we even introduced a couple of new consulting engineers because, for example, this one engineering firm impressed us with their expertise in sanitary sewer systems. And so we've used them on those projects where we might have a comfort level on road projects with another consulting engineer. So that's how that process goes through. What was that, I forget the second?
Well, no, no, but I just, I guess, but efforts are made to not hire consultants when unnecessary.
And it depends on the expertise we have in-house. Obviously, we'll use in-house if we've got it. The other is if we have six projects on board, six major projects on board and there's only so many hours in the day in the week that we can only handle four in-house, we may have to put two out there, not just because of expertise, just to get the job done because they were determined to be a high priority that has to be done in that current year.
Thanks, sir.
Ben?
I assume I have...
Yes.
Thank you. Could you clarify the process of how you prioritize these projects? In particular, I realize you put up criteria, I'm not, that's not what I'm getting at. What I'm getting at is, do you have a revenue constraint that you walk into that meeting with? Or are you looking at projects and drawing a line somewhere and then seeking revenue?
Yes. Seriously, it is a combination of all that. When you all of a sudden realize, for example, using the North Street pump station, that a failure of a pump station could be catastrophic and you've only allocated $750,000 for that year, well, we may have to extend it because it is so important to take on that project.
And for those of you who were regular attendees of the council meetings last year, after we had done this initial sort of, I guess, breakdown and meeting, I've started warning the town that what was under the road was much worse than what was above it. So we actually had to ask the town to bear with us while we fix the sewers as opposed to the roads. So yes, there is indeed, you know, monetary constraints, but if something is that much of an emergency, we felt as though it was, you know, really imperative to do it, so we were going to have to make everything else wait. But what we really tried to impress upon the department heads was not to be parochial in their view toward capital projects, but to really think about, you know, which projects needed to get done which were the most critical for the town in general. So, and you know, not everyone likes the outcome, it's fair, I totally understand that, but that's kind of the way we look at it. And that's why even though we encumbered money this year for North Street, it's a two-and-a-half-year roughly project, so it'll be going on for quite some time.
And another important thing to keep in mind is we have to do, not only for our own planning, but also for the state, a five-year capital plan. That doesn't mean you can sit at home and keep score for the next five years because surprises come along and I do the same thing for the YMCA where I, boy, I feel good about the five-year plan for the Y and all of a sudden, a boiler breaks down or there's other surprises or a roof that you thought had 10 years left in it, only had one year left in it. So there will be changes in the process. We have, the goal was to have a 20-year road plan. It doesn't necessarily stick to the project. But you can grab a microphone there and... We'll switch on the side.
So, and again, one of the things that the 20-year road program from 1996 brought to us was a structured approach to which projects were, should be done in which, in which sequence for the entire borough inventory of 220 roads. Now, when some of the other projects in sewer and water came along, we had to take more of a risk approach to getting that done. And with the project review committee concentrating on risk, that clearly put off a few of the roads in a way that had to come, reprioritize other projects throughout the borough. And so I think the risk-based approach is better for the borough, but again, it took, it took away from several roads that we had in our 20-year program which were kind of defined and prioritized in a different way.
Any other clarification questions before we get to our discussion? All right. Now with our discussion questions, we're going to start you off easy with some maybe low discussion and quick answers and then we'll get into the ones where Pat can talk a little bit more about sources and all of that. So this is an easy one. So we just spent about 50 minutes going over the process. Do you have a better idea of how we will do this capital process at this point? If you can, if you have a comment, you can say so and we'll get...
One quick question, for the stuff that's really long, long-term, like the sewers, the water, the electric, do you guys have a 20 to 50-year plan that everything that must be in some sort of cycle, it has to be replaced?
We don't, but with the new asset management approach that they've, we're trying to develop. I'm sorry. So, right now, Pat, Doc Esposito here has kind of spearheaded a asset management approach to, for all the borough's infrastructure, not just for the roads.
Okay.
And it's going to really yield long-term results for us if we get that plan developed. And I believe it's going to be more or less cutting-edge for local municipalities as well. It's going to be a great product.
So at the end of the day, you'll sort of have an annual number that you probably need to spend on to keep the electric utility healthy, the water utility healthy, the sewer system healthy. And we didn't even get into the joint meeting, but there's a cycle as well.
Correct, well, the joint meeting has started on theirs as well. And so they actually have a professionally-prepared consultant's product that does just that. We're trying to work our own product in-house primarily. And if we need to farm it out to a consultant, we can do that, but we're trying to pull all the information in first.
So when do you think you'll be able to come back to the public and say, you know, these utilities that we all own, this is the shape that they're in, this is the type of, you know, rejuvenation funds we need for them?
I think the five-year plan gives you a good indication of what we need short-term and I think the asset management plan will give you a very good indication of what we're going to need long-term. But again, the asset management plan, as Mayor Conley had said, is more of a financial model as to projecting what you're going to need financially moving forward than it is a checklist of what's going to happen in what year.
Very good question.
Going along, for example, I mentioned this at a meeting a couple of weeks ago that led me that we're going to have a problem with these street pump stations, we're going to look at a few pump stations. We allocated 34... We're going to look at three pump stations. We allocate people to many lots. My suggestion, save some money, get a better contractor, get a better job. Instead of taking them one at a time, I would suggest that we...
Take three pump stations.
Put them together, one package there, one consultant, and go on and think. Better contractors, a guy with a little more experience, instead of doing one at a time. And I use that analogy by going, "Oh, yeah, I'm saying a better contractor." I need one twice a month. Step, side steps, a bag, one at a time. You'll charge them one. If you do them three at once, you'll save money. So what I'm suggesting is that we do these pump stations all at once. I think that you should get a better contractor.
Very good suggestion. And we've just put that together with some of the water projects. And as each one, as you hear this discussion, you quickly realize there is no easy answer. Sometimes you combine them to get the better ones. Sometimes because of the variety of the project that's going on, you have to put them out separately. But we have to look at each one, and that's, with your suggestion, we've challenged the staff to make sure we package them the right way. And just, it's not capital, but if anyone's been in Madison for a long time, I think this goes back about 20 years when it was the idea of, let's put out a garbage bid into three sections of the town so we can have greater competition. So smaller haulers could bid on one section and so on. And it was interesting. We got three bids, one for each section of town. A little suspicious, but you just never know when you break things up what'll happen. But that's many years ago. Anything else on the, whether you have a better idea of the process? And actually, I should stop. I just realized one other thing. Robert's going to fall as I walk back and forth, so I'll try to stop going back and forth. Susan?
I do have a better idea of the process, but I'd like to look at the product. Where can I see the five-year plan?
It's on our website.
Is it? I don't know what...
It's in the for you.
How do I find it?
It's in the engineering webpage underneath the project review committee website. Okay? There's a little tab there that says project review, which is the five-year plan, the annual plan, and quite a few other documents for your...
Thank you.
We'll get a link. We'll get it. On these hot topics, we should, we'll make sure there's links on the front page, homepage. Anything else on the process? Last week, just before the council meeting, we had a presentation on the road projects that were coming up. So, and we did our projects. We did them on Woodland. We've done them on, we did it the first part of Green Avenue and so on. So the question now is, have you attended these meetings? Did you find, was it helpful? And part two is, it is a twofold thing. One is to help people understand what the project is, what the timing is, what the impact on the neighborhood is. But the other part is to get your suggestions back again. So if you attended these meetings, did you feel that your suggestions were listened to? Comments?
Since I live on Pine...
Yes.
I will, I will tell you that it was, we really appreciated the meeting you guys had in advance. And I also appreciated the fact that you had a construction engineer on site who was able to talk to me on a regular basis, and I was able to alert my neighbors in terms of changes to the schedule, things that were going to happen, so people could plan a little bit better. Because I think that type of communication is really helpful when you're doing a large infrastructure-type project in a neighborhood. So yes, I would say we were very happy with the process.
And it has become a great system, as Pat was the kind of go-to person for his neighborhood. We found for each neighborhood we go into, there is someone that takes the lead. Whether it started off through a block party that someone collected email addresses. Now we can contact that one person and they can share it with their neighbors because they're probably more likely to read an email from Pat about the neighborhood than they are from me on the neighborhood. Sam?
And believe me, I don't want to be negative or anything, but I see something, and I'm an expert. That's my business is construction. Even though I hear a lot of times, there's somebody on site. We've got to make sure these contractors do what they want. Even, what I mean by this is that, for example, because somebody's on site or inspected, to make sure that if there's 30 shovels of sand that go in the bag of cement, when he joins up the Belgium block, not 50 or 60 shovels of sand. In two or three years, the joints wash out. This is what I'm talking about. Just because somebody's on site, you've got to have somebody to make sure that the ingredients is right, so to speak. If the Belgium block are four inches in, and that was my whole thing from way back when because I seen too many jobs around. And like I said, you're going to pick it around. Anyways, I asked five or six meetings, I want to show you some of the problems that brand-new jobs, things ain't being done according to what they're supposed to be. Again, like I said, I just want, I just want us to get our money's worth. So these roads and, again, like I said, I seen too much work that wasn't done right. Jobs with topsoil was supposed to be three or four inches, they put clay back. I just want these contractors to make sure we get our money's worth. That's all I was coming. And make sure, just because somebody's on site, does he know what he's looking for, or you know? That was my whole argument. Again, I don't want to be negative. I just see too many things. And if anybody wants, I'm available. I'll show you around all brand-new projects that ain't going to last.
Certainly a very good point. Observing is one thing, observing and making sure it is done to specifications. And on the suggestions, you know, if you've attended any of these meetings, you can, you've probably heard the passion. I remember with the Woodland project, the idea of half the room, you've got to put the sidewalk in. The other half the room, you've got to, can't put the sidewalk in. So it is a process that the engineers have to deal with. And ultimately, the council has to listen to it all and make the decision not based on the neighborhood or the most vocal party, but it has to be based on the overall good. So sometimes you may speak at these meetings and it may not happen, but there is a process that gets it through. Any other comments on our project meetings we've had? So here's a little meatier question. We talked about how we try to set priorities based on safety, based on what is the impact if it fails, based on the traffic in the road, or the overall sequence of projects. A water main goes before paving and not the other way around. So if you were in charge of setting priorities, how would you set the priorities? How would you set priorities? Comments?
You know, in other words, if you're talking about roads or sidewalks, whatever ones are in the worst shape, that's the ones, whether they're down here or up there, whatever. The ones that are in worse shape, that's the ones you've got to do first. So our engineers or whoever should ride around and say, hey, this is the worst one, let's do that one first. I mean, that's the way you do things. Just like you do a house.
There we go. A great motto. Worst first.
That's right.
We've got Stephen and then Sadi Pibbly next.
I would list all the infrastructures and prioritize which is the most important. To me, in my mind, we have to have electricity. So the electric system should be looked at first, followed by the water system because they're two really necessities. Roads, they're nice when they're all paved and they look great, but you know, we can all navigate potholes. So to me, roads would be further down on the list than the other two.
Sadi?
I would also say that in setting priorities, it's important to make sure that we are consistent from one year to the next. So if A is given higher priority than B in year one, then it shouldn't be the case that things are flipped around in year two or year three.
Consistency. Susan?
I think that we should consider public health and safety issues first, which means to my mind that sewers are very high on the list.
And just for a disclaimer, I never went to newsprint writing school. And I always have this pressure of spelling correctly when the whole room is watching. So, and I count on spell check. So don't hold this against me. Any other comments on how would you set priorities? John?
Emergencies first, and maybe put all the different departments, for lack of a better word, in a basket and go by the ones that affect the town as a whole first, and then get into ones that are more of a local issue. Maybe you can divide them in two groups, one macro, one micro, and then do the ones that are most important in both groups first, hopefully, if there's funding.
Emergencies, and then the greater the impact for the whole town, the higher priority. Other thoughts on how to set priorities?
It's not the easiest thing in the world, but if possible, if there's a financial component that you can apply to it. So in other words, if you don't fix the sewer system, what's it going to cost us? Or what's it going to cost the residents if it fails? Same thing with electric, same thing with water, same thing with roads, same thing with storm management. Those things have financial impact on either the town itself or the people who live here. And to the extent that you can measure them, that's something that should be considered.
So the cost today versus the cost tomorrow, if you decide to put it off and it becomes catastrophic? It shifts...
That's essentially what we were discussing, but you can measure what the impact of it is.
Yep. Yep. You have that planned project that becomes the emergency project, and now all of a sudden, it's got a different price tag.
So presumably, parks would then be negative, right? We'd be earning what we're doing.
Technically, we're going to be better. You know, the other way is, you may want to come up with a, we want to dedicate 20% to this, 50% to this, 20% to this, 10% to this, so that certain areas would never get any funding otherwise.
Right. It is a, it is a challenge. You could say, all right, our sewer system and the electrical grid needs the top priority. But meanwhile, the reasons that people moved to Madison get neglected, the parks and other things. So it is, you've got to balance that. So it's, set the priorities, but don't forget about the other things on the list ever. Other thoughts on how to set priorities, or how you would set priorities? So given current state of our infrastructure, that doesn't mean it's bad or good. But given the current state and those challenges, people are aware of everything we need to do, or almost aware of, and the fact there's limited funds, do you think the borough should borrow funds? Pay as you go? Use utility surpluses or other options? How would you try to tackle these projects, funding-wise? We'll start with Pat and then we'll go over to Sam.
Well, I think first, you know, again, if you look at the electric utility, I think at least for a couple of years, that's going to throw off quite a bit of money. I don't know about the numbers that Rob was talking about in terms of how much it'll diminish the savings, but I was taking a quick look, and I think your additional surplus could be anywhere from $5 to $7 million more a year once the new wholesale rates kick in, for at least two-plus years. Okay. I'll stick with my number. But anyway. So, I mean, that's one thing. So I think you should really, that's a big opportunity you should take a look at first. The second thing is, that is in the future, a year and a half, two years, carrying on for at least a couple more years. And since you're currently buying a couple of years out, you actually will have some sort of visibility over the horizon about how much you may have available in the out years as you move forward. So I would really take a serious look at that first. I think the biggest question there is, do you want to accelerate any of those funds by borrowing against those for next year, depending on how much money you think you're going to have in capital? And do you have any critical needs that could be satisfied sooner rather than later? So I think before you even have the discussion about, do you want to borrow, I think you really should measure that opportunity first.
So the, before you start, Sam, just a quick, so as we shift...
Turn on the microphone. As we shift to the better wholesale electric purchases, we'll spin off more. And then suggesting that we should actually look at, rather than wait for that to start coming in there, for some of these really pressing projects, do you borrow knowing that you'll have this income stream in coming years? Sam, and you want...
I'd like to say one thing. You know, we have been extremely fortunate in that we've been able to ride this, we're buying here at the low, almost historic lows, and it's not necessarily something we can always count on.
No, you're saying that. That's why we're almost all the capital, I think you suggested that.
Well, I've suggested, there's a lot. Or you could just lower electric rates and raise taxes. We can all write off our taxes, but that's something else. But either way, it's not, you know, I think that maybe in the past, you know, many years ago, people just assumed it was sort of a, it was always going to, there's always going to be the savings, right? And we have to be careful not to fall into that trap again. So while everyone's doing a fantastic job rolling out this project, you know, this program, buying at the low, it's, you know, I think it would be foolish to assume that prices will never go up again. So we can't get hooked on that again, so.
No, I would never, first of all, I would never diminish the amount of capital that we have against the current budget. I would also not use that money for other significant living capital. But I think again, it's a lot of money that you're going to see between at least 2014 and 2016. And I think that should seriously go into any planning process for the capital budget for the next five or six years.
Okay, so we'll get, after Sam, we'll get Ben. But some of the takeaway on that is, there is volatility to the electric. So if you use it for capital, you have choices. If you start using it too much for operating, all of a sudden, you're going to have to figure out where to cover it from. And the other thing we've learned is, if we can predict future capital, I'm probably not standing here. I've got a job somewhere and a beautiful house. But, so anyway, Sam?
I was wondering, I thought you were going to say on the ceiling, how much you can raise electric because of your large ratepayers abandoning us if we raise it too high. Is that true?
It's, just like any other commodity or product, you've got to be sensitive to the purchasers. Drew in particular can go off out into the open market and purchase electric. And so if we decided, all right, let's charge double so we can do everything, well, that's not going to work well. And the reality is, if you charge more than it's really worth, we're neighboring towns. It's just another name for a tax. Sorry, Sam. Thank you for your patience.
You know, correct me if I'm wrong, but as of right now, to my understanding, between the Board of Education and the borough, we already borrowed about $70 million, maybe more. And it's costing us $3, $4 million interest. I don't know the numbers, but I know we're up there. Has the Board of Ed spent over 50, we've spent over 30, and we've got this sewer plant that we've got to do something down it order two or three months. You know, I just think we ought to just maybe stop borrowing. We're getting like the United States, just keep borrowing money, you know? I just think maybe we ought to look at what we have spent, what we owe. We owe quite a bit of money. In the old days, my mentor, Mr. Higgs, he used to pay as you go. And I think we're just burying ourselves. Maybe we ought to just call time. We don't know what's going to happen in 2013, 14. We don't know who the president's going to be next year. We don't know a lot of things. Maybe we ought to just slow down and, like I said, I don't know the exact number, but I know they're way up there, in the millions that we owe already.
The takeaway there is, if we decide to borrow, we should cautiously because obviously it does push the cost out to potentially future generations. Ben?
I just wanted to follow up on Pat's point for a minute. I'm certainly not an advocate of piling on debt. And I don't necessarily think in every situation, debt, I think, seems the right step. But, and I'll add one more caveat. I don't, I don't think it's a good profession to try and dictate interest rates. But given the current environment, this financing rates, and you don't get these opportunities too many times in a lifetime to be able to borrow at a high and low rate. So it is something you have to keep in mind, consideration, if you might have to pay for these projects as you go forward.
So the key thing is, you know, what is the long-term cost? And as we know right now, the cost of debt is cheaper. And just as a reminder for people to understand the system, when the borough... And just as a reminder for people to understand the system, when the borough decides to borrow, it is a governing body decision. When the Board of Education decides to borrow, it is a voter's decision. And that's just the way it is. And so both, the borrowing for the borough was, for the Board of Education to improve the schools was voted on by the town, and the borrowing here was voted on by the council.
It was all taxpayer's?
It is all taxpayers' money.
It would also be nice at some point to do an analysis of, given how we prioritize funding today, you know, for sewers and roads and, and building down with this buildings and parks, to see where the monies that were spent over the last 10 years, how they were distributed according to the current priorities, and learn what we did perhaps to draw on in the past and how we need to change our thinking as we budget for the future.
So to help our learning process and private processes, take a look back as we look forward.
I'm going to let Bob catch up on his handwriting.
We didn't have in the budget scribes on the boards.
I think ultimately, at some point in time, obviously, I think people have to understand that borrowed money has to end up in the operating budget at some point in time. So it is not no horn of plenty that is sitting out there. I think one of the reasons we're in the problem that we're in is because we have not had a plan in our operating budget to set funds aside on a continuous basis so that there is a plan for use of operating tax that is there over and above what we have to use to fund the debt service. And you just have to go back and take a look at one of your earlier slides, when it goes from zero to 250 to 500 to 750, and it bounces all over the place. Whereas if you had a stable approach to what you're trying to do, it would also force you, I think, to take a look at the priorities. Maybe there is a backlog there, and maybe that's something we ought to take a look at in terms of maybe having to use a borrowed fund, then you're going to have to take a look in the future, is how that's going to be liquidated.
Very good points as far as looking forward and how you do the borrowing. Just using the roads for example, take the 20-year plan, and it's not a 20-years, it's 20 years and you reset. If the 20-year plan says you spend a million a year on roads, you don't borrow because where does it stop? But if you are, use this example, once every 70 years having to do a major investment into this building to make it barrier-free, to bring it up to standards, that borrowing makes better sense because it's a kind of a one-shot deal and it is a long-term benefit.
Just following up on that, if we do use a five-year plan, and sometimes you do have emergencies that do occur, and you're going to have to shift some of that money that's in the five-year plan to occur at year in terms of activity. But then we ought to be able to take a look at that and say, okay, that money that was set aside in the year 2016 is being spent now, we ought to then say, then that money that we're doing today is going to be then used somewhere in the future. We ought, I think we need a stable source of funding for our capital improvements.
If you can't read that, need a stable source of funding.
To follow up on that, I think that what should happen is that each department should look at what they have for their service and pinpoint what's going to break down, when, how much it's going to cost. And like in the old days, people would put money into an envelope for rent and food and Christmas cloths, those kinds of accounts should be set up to cover them when they do break. And if they don't break the first year and they break three years down the road, if you keep adding to that envelope every year, a few dollars, ten, twenty thousand dollars or so, you would have cash in an account to pay for that right away and not have to consider borrowing it or where's the money coming from, how would you want to switch it? It would already be there, the contingency fund of each department.
So that's kind of re-supporting the idea of the asset management plan. For example, the water department says, we're going to need a million dollars in year five for project XYZ. We're not going to wait till year five to maybe put aside, try to find that million dollars that, we put $200,000 aside per year working towards that target, is that...
Yes, that's exactly what I was telling you about. And if it doesn't break, you have to add $200,000, you put those $200,000 in, and when it breaks and you spend $100,000, you're still got $300,000 for the next thing that goes wrong. And you have to make it so that that money can't be touched unless it's the contingency that was planned.
Put it in that lockbox.
Yes.
Following up on that, I mean, not just the zero, but I think all of your suggestions, all of your proposals, including adjustments to the water rates with a $200,000 revenue stream generated in addition to the prior years, previous to that four years, the rate increase that you saw over the last three years, $200,000.
Get that microphone near your mouth.
$200,000 aside, and by the end of the four years, we'll have $800,000 towards the cost of the automated meter project. So we are kind of, we are collectively, all of us who live in town, are, through our water bills, are doing that, and then we will roll back to the prior lower rates, and we're still 70, even with this rate increase, we're 70% lower our cost of water than American Water and the towns around us. That, the other thing I wanted, just in regard to Sam's point, just a couple notes. There are 566 towns in New Jersey, only 15 of those 566 towns are rated AAA, and that's for a reason, because of prudent management. Our bonded capacity by state statute is $100 million. We are under $30 million. We are less than one-third of what our bonded capacity debt the state says we could borrow funds at, so we are dramatically underfunded compared to the towns around us and our peer groups. In terms of expenditures for capital, our, those charges reflect that we have multi-million dollar investments in capital each and every year for the last, since I've been here, since 2007, and it predates me with a lot of prudent management of former governing body members. The towns around us contrasted, the two Chatham's, they spent less than $100,000 a year, going until the last two years for capital improvements. So you've got towns with sewer charges, they don't pick up the garbage, you got to pay for it, they don't pick up your leaves, all of that's embedded into our tax rate, and we're still investing two-plus million dollars a year. I think we're doing okay.
And just a reminder, everyone in the audience and those who are watching on TV a week from now, is as a, part of a town meeting is not to necessarily say we're doing things poorly. I think, I think everyone would probably agree that Madison is well ahead of the curve as far as how we approach projects and certainly the financial health and the AAA bond rating. So just keep that in mind, we're doing a great job, and we have these meetings because even if you're doing a great job, you could probably do a better job. Pat, and then we'll go back to Tom, and then Sandy.
Yeah, thanks. I think it's hard ultimately to answer this question because I think until the asset management system is up and running and you truly know what sort of the replacement cost for everything that we have is and the cycle for all that, and I guess where the discrete hills are, you know, big purchase, like if we need a new water tower or a new substation, it's really hard to say what you should do because you really don't know how much you can spend. We've kind of been spending what we can afford as opposed to what we really should be, and I think we need to really, a true picture of what does it really take to maintain our infrastructure, or what should it take to maintain our infrastructure, and then do a comparison to what we're spending and then how we would go about paying for that if there's a big gap.
Mr. Cody, I guess I have a question for you. You say that our bonding capacity for the borough of Madison is... But if I were taking a look at that bonding capacity, I'm sitting here as a taxpayer, I certainly would add the 40 or 50 million dollars that are sitting over in the school accounts, the empty-dump million that are sitting over in the sewage accounts, and saying that's all hitting, it's got to go through our operating budget one way or another, and it's going to be darn close to $100 billion.
And just a little takeaway, and I think the recent example may not have been the best for the town, is we both took on debt because we had to do it at a time when this building had to be improved, our fireworks building was, services outdated, the schools needed investment. We both took on debt at the same time, so I think, Tom, your point is, we should, when we're borrowing, we've got to look at the, not just, we have our little square and we look at ourselves and we don't worry about what the Board of Education is. So we have communications between the two boards at a level that we've never seen before, so I think we've taken some steps in that direction. And the other thing I hear is, you know, you look at the credit limit on everyone's credit cards in this room, and you know if you went to the credit limit, you'd be in trouble probably. So yes, we can take our, by state, we could go up to $100 million, but it's that best interest of our taxpayers, and so that has to be what you can do and what you should do, there's a gap in between. Sandy?
So I guess I would just add to what Pat was saying, I mean, I agree with him, until you have this asset management plan in place and we really have a clear picture, a very transparent, clear picture of what our upcoming challenges would be, I would venture that we shouldn't do anything that isn't essential. I think that, for the example like that Mr. Cody gave about the electric meters, the automatic meters, although I think that that's a worthwhile project to do, and I understand, you know, when that started, you know, the circumstances were different. I think with the financial situation the way it is and people not really being sure about specifically what are, you know, the impact of not carrying enough surplus might have on our bond rating, which I think was in their letter, which was the diminishing surplus, I would suggest that we would want to basically, I don't know if the borrowing the funds or the pay as you go is the right answer, but I think that we really should have a much clearer picture of what our upcoming challenges should be before we do anything that would be on a kind of, it would be nice to do, but maybe we don't have to do it right now.
So another reinforcement, and I don't think Doc paid anyone to reinforce this asset management plan, the importance of it, but I think we are hearing that loud and clear. Do homework, find out where our assets are and the health of them, and set priorities based on that. And just because something seemed to be a priority today when it comes to funding it, we may have to look differently on it. Pat?
Yeah, actually, Sandy was talking about something that you guys have looked at. I thought there was actually a payback on there, on that particular project, or maybe the water utility project. And if that's the case, and a project pays for itself, I think that's, that's another component of when you talk about, should you borrow the money or should you do a project? That's another component you have to consider because projects that are self-funding are the best.
I'm just writing down return on investment as a theme on that comment.
I would like to add that, I think that the engineering department has a very good idea of what we need to do. I think the asset management plan is going to be a fantastic addition to what they do. And I'd also like to say that, you know, if you ever want to learn more about electric power transmission than you'd like to forget, just spend a day with Mike Piano, and, I mean, he knows every inch of these substations, his men do, they're well-maintained, so it's not like, I don't think we're living in a vacuum, you know, kind of hoping for the best. I think that, you know, our department heads, electric, water especially, you know, and DPW have very good idea of the, of the state of their equipment, what needs to be done, and that's why we've been able to have them work together to prioritize projects. You know, I think really the asset management plan will help us for the disaster scenario or, you know, a set plan on when things have to be, you know, fixed, like we did at the joint meeting. You know, they're, you know, they list things as critical, this is about to go, this isn't. But as it pertains to the property plan, equipment in the borough of Madison, I have all the confidence in the world that, you know, the department heads are well on top of the state.
We have a great team, Bob, and then we'll get Pat, and then we're going to try to wrap up here almost on schedule.
And just to, just to add on to that, I have a bold prediction that the asset management plan, once you componentize every component in every asset that you own and attach a value to it, and I think Pat's snickering in a way because he kind of, he kind of knows this in the back of his mind, it's far more than we can afford to maintain. We're very lucky. I think the operations of our assets at this stage of the game have been reasonable, and I think our costs for maintaining it have been reasonable. But the danger in an asset management approach is you have such detail and you have so many costs attached to all those details that it's going to look daunting when we see it all pulled together. And I think that's the one caution, it's not going to turn into a new project list course, it's going to turn into, this is our financial plan long-term, this is how bad it could get, but doubtful it will ever get that bad. So that's just a tail provision on the asset management approach. It neither is a perfect solution, but it's going to be nice to have a nicely little componentized look at each one of our assets. And again, attach a value to that will open everyone's eyes in terms of what we have and what we probably ought to be putting aside for anything.
Plan for the worst and hope for the best. Pat?
Somebody told me it was 8:30, so I have to talk fast. Yeah, I agree with Ray. I mean, it is a challenging time, it has been for the last five or so years, but we have continued to maintain the infrastructure with the funds that we do have. I've sat here through the budget meetings for the last several years, watched the council go through the process to try to allocate the funds. I think Bob's right, when you finally do do a complete asset management as any, I'm in the technology world, we do that periodically. When you look at the mountain you create, sometimes it is very daunting and you tend to push some things out. But I think we're on the right road. I think that we've been getting to the point where we have good plans, and I think that it'll be very helpful as councils go forward trying to decide how to spend the money, and also for people who say, you know, why not this project, why this project? I think it'll help you guys explain to people why you're going and the direction you're going with the funds that you do have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank everyone for coming out tonight. It was, hopefully you found this well worth your time and we greatly appreciate your input. And one of my favorite TV characters, Si Sims, I just want to paraphrase his old quote, but, "An informed resident is our best citizen." So thank you so much for spending the time to come out here and sharing your thoughts, and hopefully everyone that watches this on video will also gather great knowledge. And remember, we have handouts, you can get one from a Dory. Thank you so much for handling the microphone.